Thank you very much. Sorry for being late. Our e-session ran long, but I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, July 1st at this time. Is Chuck here? Chuck Simonsen, are you here? No, he's not here. I apologize for that. We're going to go ahead and have a moment of silence. Chuck Simonsen was supposed to be here, but he must have run into some issues. But we'll have a moment of silence followed by Vice Mayor Farrell's leading of the pledge. So if you all please stand. Thank you.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Vanessa, can we have a roll call, please?
Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilmember Frank.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a form.
Great, thank you very much. I don't have anything at this time under the Proclaimations, Acknowledgements, and Awards, so we'll move on to item four, the report from the mayor. At this time, I just have one thing to report, and that is an event that is taking place with the Blue Star Moms of Maricopa. This is a group that helps send packages as well to our service members overseas. But this is actually just in coordination with them. It says, "The Maricopa Wells National Junior Honor Society will be hosting a sock drive to assist the Maricopa Blue Star Mothers in sending packages to our Maricopa military members. Our community is encouraged to donate plain white new tube socks for this drive. They can't have any stripes on them. But you can also contribute olive green or drab color of sorts, so dark colors, as well. This will be going on from July 7th to July 28th. There will be donation boxes set up at the Maricopa Wells office, the Hay Maricopa TV office, and the Tortosa HOA, as well as the Maricopa City Hall. You can drop them off here at the front counter. The socks are for the soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, to wear as they go through plenty of them. Many service members don't have a commissary available for them to go shopping. So again, this is in conjunction with the Blue Star Mothers and the Maricopa Wells Middle School National Junior Honor Society. So again, if you'll have the opportunity to drop those off here, we'd really appreciate it." That's the only announcement I have at this time, and so we'll move on to the report from the city manager.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I would like to recognize several outstanding employees for the city and would ask Rick Clor, our interim human resources director, to come up to give you a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Rose. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm Rick Clor. I'm your interim HR director, and we want to take tonight and have a little bit of fun. Last year, the city approved and began our inaugural employee award recognition program. Part of that employee award and recognition program is an employee of the year. And if Ruben would cue this up for me, and if I can work this, the employee of the year is awarded to a city of Maricopa employee or employees who are performing at a consistently exceptional level. We have a lot of people here that do a lot of good work. There are three categories for the awards. One is a non-management position or a person. One is a mid-manager person. One is from public safety side of the house. Last year, we had a handful of nominations. It was our first year. We had three really wonderful people that will recognize this council. Most of you recognize them. This year, I'm very happy to report to you that we had 27 nominations from our city employees and from some citizens, and frankly, from some of you council members. Thank you, recognizing the hard work that this city staff has done over the last year. I first want to recognize the nominees from each department. From the city manager's office, Jackie Shalas. I think Jackie may even be in the room. From Community Services, we have David Aviles, Rocky Brown, Brenda Campbell, and Randy Little. Development Services, Saida Flores. Economic Development, Denise Earhart and Michael Weiner. Finance, Michelle Lizaragi. From the Fire Department, we had quite a number of nominations. Dan Ashton, James Carlisto, Mike Curto, O'Shea Davis, Mike Grant, Cindy Inskeep, Lonnie Inskeep, Ken Pantoja, Eddie Rodriguez, and Larry Walker. And finally, from the Police Department, the nominees we received were for Colt Holman, Rebecca Malice, Jim Thwaites, and Al Weston. It was a very hard decision. There was a committee appointed by the manager to select the people that are recipients of the award. And at this point, I'll call the manager up. I'll get that box.
Yes, would you? Thank you. If I could have Chief Stahl come up, please. Chief Stahl recommended or nominated Ricky Alvarado. Ricky assisted the four Maricopa with fundraising efforts to sponsor a record number of children for shop with a cop, collaborating with the Occhin community neighboring children as a worthwhile event. Ricky also finds time to direct, or he will be finding time to direct, this year's Relay for Life and teach at the Walter Cronkite School of Journalism. Ricky epitomizes loyalty to the city of Maricopa. And I would like to invite Ricky up for his presentation. In addition to the large check that's being presented, he also gets a smaller one for a $500 amount. Rick Clor, if you would stay up here. I'd also like to bring up Vanessa Bellin. Vanessa has demonstrated her passion for excellence as well as her contagious good nature, results in positive relations and excellence, as well as her partnership with stakeholders as she deals with them on a regular basis. Vanessa was instrumental in the unprecedented recruiting of hiring over 75 new employees for the Copper Sky facility. I'd all ask you to congratulate Vanessa for being an outstanding city employee. I would like to invite up Brian Richel, our finance director. Brian nominated Patty Lacome. Patty is embodiment of consistency overall and exceptional service. Patty's leadership and hard work has never been more apparent than during our transition from the old city hall to the new building. She was relentless in her attention to detail, making sure the move was accomplished in a seamless manner. I'd like to congratulate Patty as one of our outstanding employees. I would ask for Chief Stahl to return. Chief Stahl nominated Mary Wakowski, and hopefully I didn't butcher her name too bad. Mary, as you know, recently transitioned from the city manager's office over to the police department. She does both our grants as well as our victims' advocate, as well as focus quite a bit on other jobs, duties for the police department. She's been an outstanding employee and one that I have worked with perhaps the most closely. Without Mary's dedication and passion, the police department would not have received funding for three new police officers to staff our middle schools, life safety equipment, for an immediate action team, and training support for active scooter drills, just to name a few. Mary personifies excellence in her daily activities, and her loyalty to the city of Maricopa is unprecedented. I'd like to congratulate Mary as being one of our outstanding city employees. Just in closing, I'd like to recognize all of the nominees that were recommended by their respective department directors. Certainly, everyone can't win, but I do believe that it gives you a sense of the level of excellence that we strive for and the quality of the staff that you have hired. So I am just very fortunate to be in a leadership position with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give another round of applause to everybody. I always tell people, the staffs can get mad at me, but I always tell people here in Maricopa, we have most of our staffers working two and three jobs, so we really, really, really appreciate all that they do. So thank you very much. Anything else, City Manager Rose?
No additional items to report, your honor.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, that'll take us to item six, the call to the public. If you'd like to approach the stand, we'd love to hear from you. You'll have three minutes, as addressed by the timer, and we ask that you please keep your comments respective and short in nature, but also, please note that the council does not typically answer, as this is not something that's agendized, but we'd love to hear from you. So please state your name.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Evelyn Clark, and I am the program director and founder of ECI Maricopa. ECI is a not-for-profit organization here in the city, and we do youth empowerment programs for youth, as well as for women and people with disabilities in our community. And I was invited here by Councilwoman Gussi. She is in support of our mission and has invited us to participate in the Let's Move Campaign with the city, which we did on last week. We participated in the dance fitness portion. And coming on this Thursday, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we will be back at the Copper Sky location in order to tape that Let's Move Dance for the national Let's Move Campaign submission. So we invite everyone out in order to participate with us and make a good showing for the city of Maricopa. In addition, the ECI program is also going to be hosting a girls' camp, starting on next week, July the 7th through the 11th, for girls ages 6 to 16. And we're going to be teaching them about etiquette, money management, self-defense, confidence building, and different skills like that in order to enhance their success later on in life. So thank you for allowing me to provide that information to this council.
Thank you very much, Evelyn. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Price, council. I'd like to thank you for considering the public safety at Copper Sky on tonight's agenda. I support giving the police all the resources they need to keep the city safe. I also would like to thank Chief Stahl for everything he's done and make sure that the department gets everything they need in keeping the city safe. So just want to thank you guys for considering that on tonight's agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Georgia Fenture, and I'm a member of the community. I'm here tonight to address the council about a problem that I think you've all been recently made aware of, about, for lack of a better word, squatters in our communities. And I just wanted you to know that I just became a victim of this problem. I spent several hours today in court, and two of the criminals were arraigned. They were going to let them go with probation, but until I got involved and let them know what was going on in our community, they've decided to press charges and felony charges and go after these people. I just wanted to ask the council to get involved because I went to ED3 and the Water Company where these people were able to open electrical service and water service in their names on a property that they had no lease or no rental agreement on. And I'm trying to get them to change their policies so that these kind of things won't happen to other individuals. So I just wanted to address you tonight and seek your help to try to get these utilities to help us get these criminals out of our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much, Georgia.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Chad Chatterton, and I'm broker-owner of Awatuki Realty. Georgia's one of my clients. We're doing a short sale on her house, and we had a meeting today, emergency meeting I called. Chief Stahl was very nice to host it. We had representatives from ED3, Global Water, Maricopa Domestic Water. We had, the press was there. Supervisor Anthony Smith was there. He did some research with the county recorder. There's, we asked Anthony during the meeting, he checked what these squatters are doing is they're breaking into houses. They are getting the utilities turned on in their name, which allows them to go down to the utility company. From the utility company, they go to the recorder's office, and they are filing adverse possession, which goes back to the 1800s. That was a way for people to come settle homes out here in the Midwest. So it's an old law, and they're not doing anything. But we did have a pretty good meeting today to discuss the problems and the solutions. We're going to continue. Chief Stahl, part of the problem that they're having is having, finding a victim. And Georgia was the first victim that was able to testify against these squatters. When Anthony Smith checked how many, we asked how many adverse possessions were filed, there were two, and both listings were in my office. One was a Freddie Mac property that Kathleen has. The squatter actually threatened her and her family if she didn't give the keys, and they're going, we did a lockout on them. Tomorrow, they'll be allowed to come get their possessions at 10 o'clock. We have somebody there. So it's, Chief Stahl and I agree that it's a problem. We talked about it Thursday. We had a great meeting today, a lot of ideas, brainstorming. We want to get the homeowners involved, the associations involved, since they patrol the area regularly. And the police department asked if, I made a call to Armless today. I'm trying to get the police department and the utility companies set up possibly to be able to use the MLS system. That way, they know they have the status of vacant homes and ownership right there on their computer. So we got a lot accomplished today so that this doesn't happen to more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Okay. Chad? Chad, hold on a second. Councilmember Brown has a question for you.
Chad, I just want to ask you a question. Your experience, has there been squatters of mostly families or individuals or combination?
If Chief Stahl would want to address, he's actually questioned the people arrested. There seems to be a group of...
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Brown. To this, to this date... Thanks, Ruben.
Surprise.
To this date, it does not involve families. It involves opportunistic people who are unfortunately, right now, spreading the word to other opportunistic people, and we want to get ahead of the curve so that we can gain the cooperation of the utility companies along with the realty companies and Pinellas County and put measures in place to increase communication and eliminate those opportunities for them. So right now, we're going to try that, the processes that we worked on today, and if the problem persists, we may need to go to a different avenue. I've already talked to the city manager about it. Should we need to go to a different avenue, maybe legislation or something like that. But we believe we have a pretty good attack on it right now.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Chief Stahl asked at the meeting today if we can bring back public caning, but I don't know if that would work.
Thanks, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Coming to you tonight is Peg Chapados, event consultant. I want to announce the second Maricopa New Resident Reception will be Saturday, July 19th, here in the council chambers from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. This time, our featured nonprofit is going to be the Maricopa Historical Society. We'll also have people from various city departments and service utility providers that'll be here to give you some information about being a new resident in Maricopa. So Saturday, July 19th, 8 to 10, here in the council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So anyone else who'd like to approach the council for the call to the public? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to the item seven. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of item 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings at this time, so that'll take us to the consent agenda. On the consent at this time, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to the regular agenda, item 10.1. This is for the mayor and city council to discuss and possibly take action to appoint one citizen to fill a vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority Board, or IDA Board. This is for discussion and action.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Mike Miranda, Economic Development Director. As you may know, we have a Maricopa Industrial Development Authority Board, which consists of seven members. Right now, we have quite a few vacancies. However, we have received a application from Mr. Quentin Smith, a Maricopa resident, who is interested in serving on this board. Happy to answer any questions on his application or the IDA Board.
Counsel, any questions? I would take a motion then if we have no questions at this time.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Micah. 10.2, the resolution of the mayor and city council, supporting a Maricopa age-friendly Maricopa initiative. This is for discussion and action.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, if approved, this resolution creates the Maricopa Aging in Place Program by establishing an advisory committee to the city council on aging, age-friendly initiatives. As discussed with you on June 17th, the program would focus on three areas: transportation, information referral, and recreational opportunities.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Yes, Councilwoman Gussi.
I'm going to...
Go ahead.
I'm going to read off an email that I received earlier today. This was from a concerned resident. He says, "In regards to the senior initiative, it's a bad idea that would only open the door for other splinter groups to demand something from the city. Please do not vote in favor of this. If it passes, it would look like special favor to a single community group." And I just wanted to address that. I don't feel this way, but I just owed it to the resident to address this issue. I don't see it as being special favors, but if you could elaborate.
I think that there are critical issues to address for different sections of our community. This just happens to focus on seniors. We also will have a program that we'll bring forward to you that addresses some of the needs of youth. In the senior area, we believe that transportation, recreational opportunities, and information referral are critical needs of that particular group, of that segment. And so we are, I'm bringing forward a program that I believe can best address those needs.
You know, I received that same email.
I do, too.
And as I...
I think we all got it.
Yeah, as I looked at that, I understood, you know, what the perception might be, but I think that the reality is, is that, like you said, I mean, this is creating an advisory council so that we have more communication with a segment of the population, which I think is the whole purpose of a council and its constituencies, is to have more communication, not less. But it's not to just hone it in on necessarily one interest group alone, but rather, you know, to start the process. And like you just said, we're planning this for the youth as well. I know that, Gregor, you and I have talked about others that we're looking to increase that communication with. So I see this as the first step, as we evolve as a city, to increasing our communication with the constituency so that we have more interaction between the city and the various different constituency groups, but that, at the end of the day, nothing is going to this particular segment, if you will. I mean, the city's not giving anything to this group. There's not any money or transaction being, you know, transpiring. So it's simply just an advisory council that's being set up to increase communication. And so I guess I understand where this resident was coming from, but I think that the bigger, broader picture is such that increased communication is always preferable with the constituency.
Councilwoman Chapados.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the two groups that were mentioned in the resolution. That's COPA seniors and Maricopa seniors. I'm familiar with both groups, and I know that they do a lot to reach out and involve seniors. So thank you, and I move to approve this item.
Second, then.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Councilman Kimball.
For the city manager, that the employee that we would be hiring to focus on this particular initiative, could we use that employee moving forward for, say, a youth initiative as well, or would we have to hire another employee for that?
The intention of the program is, long-term, to be able to recruit a volunteer that would staff it, but we initially have to get it up and going, and we want to make sure that we do a good job with it. So we're looking to bring someone in that has a lot of experience in setting up, establishing these types of programs. So, long-term, the idea is to have it staffed with a volunteer. And that would be, for the youth program moving forward, the intention will be to incorporate that into the staffing that we already have. I think I can mention his name here, since I've already talked with the Community Services Director, Chrissy. I think Rocky does a wonderful job with the youth advisory council, and I believe it would be a good fit in that area, but that's for, I guess, another day to discuss that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions, concerns? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to 10.3. We're going to take on the action of approving a budgetary transfer in an amount not to exceed $30,000 from the general fund, the general government contingency, to the general fund, city manager, regular employees, to fund a part-time position to coordinate the age-friendly Maricopa initiative. And, city manager, I guess, kind of pull vaulting off of the last one, but into this one. The idea also is to utilize the presentation we had last time with MAG, right? And we have the aging and the resources that we, already a member of MAG, this is a subgroup of development in MAG, it's a resource that's available to us, and we're going to highly utilize them as well. So basically, we're leveraging our assets even further. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So on to this particular item, then. I know you just explained it to Councilman Kimball and to the rest of us, but if you had anything further to present on this?
The intention is for this to be a temporary position, and if I believe later on that it needs to be full-time, long-term, or part-time, long-term, then I would like to be, like to come back to you for that. But initially, the approval of this would simply be for a part-time temporary position.
Okay. Councilman Brown, did you have something?
Would this person be relating to the area agency on aging at all?
Yes, this person would be the staff person for that, for working with the committee along with myself and along with Amy Peters, who is out of Maricopa Association of Governments or MAG. So we would use this individual to assist us in collecting a lot of data that's going to be needed as for, and as well as doing the outreach that will be needed to establish those programs.
Any other questions, council, on this item or issue? Okay, I would accept a motion on this.
Move to approve 10.3.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion and a second on 10.3. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is 10.4. We're going to possibly take action on approval of a temporary event traffic plan for the Great American Fourth, event at Copper Sky Park facility. This traffic plan will operate on July 4th, 2014, from the hours of 2:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. This is for discussion and action. By all means.
Hello, Mayor. Commander Hughes, Maricopa Police, councilmembers, good evening.
Well, being our second event at Copper Sky, there's some unique challenges to this facility, and the biggest one is, there's essentially one way out. And we have to utilize 347, so we're pushing all traffic onto 347, because as we know, Bolin to the, to the east stops. And so, with a fireworks event, the difficult thing is always egress, getting people out, because we're all gonna leave around the same time. The ingress of the plan, which is the first one I have shown here, it's a steady stream. It's much more easier for us to manage. Being it's our second event, myself, Brenda Campbell, and many staff members, Josh Plum, we went over it, tried to maximize traffic efficiency. We found some weaknesses in our first plan, and we have corrected them. Real quick on ingress, we have, we doubled the number of money takers for the paid parking. We moved them down to the southernmost portion of the map, and we, we're gonna be using our overflow parking at the same time as our main parking. So we're hoping to double the flow of traffic into the facility. Gate, Bolin Road, all southbound traffic, which will be probably 75% of the traffic to the event, will be directed via signboard to make a left on the Bolin. From there, they'll continue down to Gate C. Graythorne will be closed. They'll continue down to Gate C, and the reason for that is, we want to limit the backup on 347 as much as we can, because if you have an accident on 347, it's gonna be serious in nature. And if, and if that road gets shut down during the course of the event, we have serious problems with the event. We can't get people in and out. Gate A, which is the southernmost entrance on 347, that's gonna be used for northbound traffic. It's also gonna be used for our buses and ADAs. So we'll have two entrance points on ingress. Now, we'll move to egress, which will have a mass exodus of people leaving as soon as the fireworks are over. So, and also, Occhin is having their fireworks at the same time, just south of us. So we have some concerns with the amount of traffic on 347 as well. This to Orientia, top is north, bottom is south. We're going to be channelizing the slow lane on 347, which is northbound, so traffic will be a steady flow of traffic right out of Gate A. And that'll continue all the way up, and we're hoping that'll really begin to address the issue with them. There won't be a forced merge. It'll be one lane for northbound traffic straight through. But at egress, there will be some delays. You know, we'll be pushing 4,000 cars onto 347 with all the lights, and also, you throw in the train schedule on top of that. Usually, when we get the traffic flowing really well, the train comes through, and causes some issues for us. This is the egress plan as well, which, we're putting a heavy emphasis on shuttles and buses. Shuttles will be coming in Gate A, they'll be dropping off, and they'll be utilizing Desert Cedars, coming up through and back onto 347. We want to keep them flowing. And with all traffic plans, the more you can displace traffic from the choke points, the better flow you'll have. So that's very important. And this is our shuttle plan, as you can see, going up, utilizing the Desert Cedars neighborhood. So we'll have no parking on all of Desert Cedars, on Brittle Bush, and Desert Cedars Parkway, as well as Bolin, from 347 to Gate D. So that's our traffic plan. Do you have any questions, counsel?
Counsel, questions? I have some questions as it pertains to the HOA there. I know that we started this conversation here several months ago after Salsa Festival, and I was communicating with the HOA board there in trying to figure this out. Now, obviously, we are going to have, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but when I see the bus plan on this particular one, I'm seeing that that's the only flow through traffic, or local traffic only through there. Is that correct?
Yes.
And are we gonna have officers stationed at both ends of that entry? Because, I mean, to Desert Cedars, those are your only two main entry points, off 347 or off of Bolin. And, and we're going to have something to the effect of saying that there's through traffic only, no local parking, anything along those lines? Because the HOA's concern here was that, you know, if they make it through that first point, then off they go to the streets, on the side streets, and they park along there. And so, are we not going to have additional, you know, no parking signs along, you know, the internal streets as well, or is it just at the two main entrances? Which would sound logical, but again, making it past the first point, now it's a free-for-all.
Yes, Mayor. Wherever you see a star on the map, there'll be a police officer there with a team of two volunteers, and also some explorers. But we will address that, that problem. I spoke with the president of Desert Cedars HOA, and she's aware of the plan. She didn't have any problems with the plan. And we're also, we're gonna have nine officers for the event. We've bolstered our staff. We're gonna have an interior perimeter, which is gonna deal with the main event, and we'll have an exterior perimeter, both being supervised by a sergeant. The exterior perimeter's gonna deal with the neighborhoods, because there's gonna be a lot of pedestrian flow. There's gonna be Desert Cedars neighborhood, there'll be Altera, there'll be Palabra to the south. So addressing those, people blocking fire hydrants, people blocking driveways, you know, drinking in public, those various things, we'll have officers to address them and move them along.
Now, you said where there's stars, there's not a star off of, off of 347 there, entering Brittle Bush.
347 at, very up north?
Yeah.
No, we do not have an officer planned to be at that light. What we try to do is, whenever there's a traffic signal, we want to let that set in place, unless we need to make an adjustment to the intersection. So...
Okay, but if that, but if that's the case, then there's nothing to stop anyone from coming down 347, realizing that this is, you know, a parking issue for them, turning around, going back and taking a right on the northern section, and entering the association from that side?
Yes, sir.
So I, I mean, that's, I think that's the problem. The problem is, is there's, I understand not wanting to stop at the light, because that could cause a traffic issue, but, but as you can see, it goes in a ways. Is there no way to station an officer further in, so that the traffic is now off of the 347? There could be signs near 347 saying, "Local traffic only," and then have an officer, you know, further in?
We certainly can do that, absolutely.
Okay. Chief?
Mayor, council members, what we, what we have to realize is, currently under our ordinance, and there is no special event ordinance yet in place, we cannot tell people not to park in the residential area. What we can do is gain voluntary compliance by making them park legally, still on the streets, still in only areas where, where we can guide them, so we can gain some voluntary compliance. We're not restricting, we're not telling people they cannot park in that area. Only, you know, you can't block driveways, can't park in front of a fire extinguisher, can't park within 15 feet of the stop sign. Those are the restrictions. We will try to gain voluntary compliance. If not, we will cite. If, if they're blocking a fire extinguisher or too close to a stop sign, that becomes a traffic hazard, we will tow at the owner's expense. It's, it's a public street. People are allowed to park on public streets, and the HOA is aware of it.
Okay. Other questions, counsel? Yes, Councilwoman Chapadus.
Thanks, Mayor. Commander Hughes, this, this looks good. My concerns were similar to the mayor's. The only thing it says in here is, since this is a first-time effort to do this, to mitigate parking, do we have any use of those electronic billboards that have on 347, maybe to say, "Copper Sky Lot Full," or to be able to direct people? And my other question goes along with that, is how many people can we accommodate in the overfill areas?
Well, the first question, the city owns four electronic message boards. All four are gonna be deployed on this, this event. We've all used them. Most of them are gonna be, the first one's gonna be at 347 and Bolin to direct traffic, event traffic left, and one will be south. And then, our concern is also for public safety with the amount of people with the drinking. So we wanted to put one right at our city line near Farrell, then ahead, use caution, slow down. So, that, that's the first component. As far as the overflow lot, I believe, Brenda, can you help me out on this one? How many cars? I was told it's the same square footage area as the south lot. So that would be...
1,200.
1,200.
Okay. Earlier in your comments, you said egress is gonna be about 4,000 vehicles. So if we can only accommodate about two-thirds, half to two-thirds of that, obviously, the other people are gonna have to go either across 347 into Altera. Are we making any accommodations for limiting parking, parking on the other side of Bolin, west of 347?
We're, we're very limited with our choices, ma'am. The, we have, there's gonna be a lot of cars utilized in the Altera area, Desert Cedars, Palabra. It's, you know, it's, we have limited parking at the facility.
I understand that. I'm just trying to mitigate some of the problems that some of our attendees may have, since we're actually taking an effort to limit parking on the main archurials.
Yep.
Even if it's a simple signage, no parking this side, or no parking along this road.
Well, what we do have is, we have that set up on Bolin, and also Desert Cedars and Brittle Bush. But as far as the other ones, our, our city code does not give us the authority to enforce on those areas.
Okay. Can we expect to see a special event ordinance coming our way sometime soon, then?
We could.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I had one further question here, and that was, along, along Bolin itself, as it goes towards into the facility there, we have a star right in the middle of it, I assume that we're going to be making sure that there's no parking along that road. And the reason I bring that up is because, in the past, when it was at Pecana Park, you used to have a whole bunch of people that would come down this road, and they would line the road, because it was a perfect view to Pecana from the height of the fireworks and those types of things, without actually going to Pecana. And so, you know, you're gonna, this is, this is our first time here at this, at this new location, so you're gonna have a lot of people that are used to doing it that way. And so I just wanted to make sure that we are keeping that, that street open, obviously.
Yes, all officers are gonna be enforcing now, of course, 347, Bolin, and the traffic route on Brittle Bush as well.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions? All right, accept a motion on this.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. This takes us to item 10.5. This is an ordinance, the ordinance of the Mayor and City Council, adding section 3-99 of the Maricopa City Code regarding the use of off-duty police officers for traffic control and providing perseverance and the effective date thereof. This is for discussion and action.
Good evening, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Since my arrival here at the city of Maricopa, some, almost three years ago now, the officers came to me and, and asked for some sort of a city ordinance that would encourage construction contractors and people who are doing construction in our city to hire Maricopa. Let's keep our, let's keep our money with the city of Maricopa and with our police department. And I think, if I remember right, week two while I was here, I received a phone call from one of you stating, "Why is a certain unnamed police department directing traffic on 347? And traffic is all backed up, and why is this happening in our city?" This proposal before you is to encourage contractors who are doing construction work in our city, that are tied to the city contracts, to first ask for, first write of refusal at the city of Maricopa Police Department. It, again, it keeps our money local, but what, more importantly, what it does is it keeps police officers who have a vested interest in safety in our city and, and smooth traffic flow in our city, to be the ones conducting traffic enforcement and things like that. They're the ones that have first eyes on. They're also the ones that know of the continuous traffic problems before the construction event happens, so that we can advise these construction companies approximately how many officers are needed to successfully make traffic flow smooth and safe. It's been vetted by the legal unit. It's very consistent with other municipalities surrounding our jurisdiction. It's nothing that construction companies aren't already used to. We're just asking for you to now make it a priority for them to hire Maricopa police officers first. I'll entertain any questions.
I just have two questions. One, the police officers wear their uniform. They're allowed to wear their uniform during the traffic?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Gussi, yes, absolutely. There will be provisions if, if a police car is needed. They will pay a little extra money for the use of a police car to be out there as well, so that they have a fully marked police car. That will pay for the gas and, and the use of that police car, and the officer will be in full uniform. Yes, ma'am?
Can you explain why we don't use our volunteers for this purpose?
Mayor and Councilwoman Gussi, a couple real simple answers. One, as, as I've said before, they're volunteers, not voluntolds, and they're not always available. So I can't instruct somebody to be there and say, "You shall do this." Secondly, that's a huge liability upon the city for somewhat trained people to direct traffic. If we're gonna incur that liability, it certainly, certainly should be by sworn police officers who are trained and have the ability to enforce the law.
I asked a question because it's asking.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Chapadus?
Thanks, Chief. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, we have more than one extra-duty officer, so they can coordinate those requests enough in advance?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Chapadus, we have several points of, of ingress, so to speak, for, for contractors to contact us. We have a couple sergeants who do that, aside from their regular jobs as well, plus Commander Hughes is available, should they not be available. So I have several different avenues for them, so they should never call and not have anybody available to set up the off-duty employment.
Okay. My other question had to do with the 24-hour advance notice. I'm assuming those are things that you don't know about in advance, and maybe a last-minute request, or a special request that they didn't see coming? Otherwise, you'd have more advance notice than 24 hours?
Again, great question. There are some things that happen where you have flooding, water, you know, a pipe break, or something like that, and, and sometimes it is less than 24. We would really like at least 24-hour notice, but most of these construction plans are planned months, if not weeks, ahead of time, or weeks, if not months, ahead of time, and therefore, we should have plenty of time to go out, work with streets and, and transportation, to determine exactly how many officers we should need, and that they should put that in their bid, when they're bidding for the job. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 14-04.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I have an additional question for you, Chief, and that is kind of somewhat on an internal policy that you guys would put into place then. I mean, based on the approval of this, I'm in complete support. I think it's, it's a great plan. But, but the question I have is, is, obviously, we have members of our police department that live here, and that there are those that don't. And so, how does that work? I mean, are, I don't want it to be seeming, seeming like there's favoritism, you know, for those that, that live here, that get to do this, if they're looking to make extra money on the side, but at the same time, it might be, you know, a bit of an oppression for somebody that lives, you know, Glendale and is commuting here, and then they have to do this on their off-times as well, because we're having an event, and maybe they were planning on doing something else. So how, how would that work? I mean, I'm just trying to look for the, if, if we put this in place, what, I want to make sure that our officers are happy with the fact that they get to do this, rather than they have to do this.
Mayor Price, members of council, this is a voluntary thing for the officers. They sign up to work for these, these duties. So they put this in their work schedule, so that they schedule for their days off. It is not anything mandatory or anything like that. This would be strictly voluntary. They sign up for it. There are certain rules that if, if, for instance, you sign up for it and fail to show up, and we have to call somebody else out, your off-duty work permit or privileges will be suspended for a period of time. will be suspended for a period of time. We don't want people promising, so to speak, to be, to be there and then not show up. So, there will be protocols put in place, much like other jurisdictions, where this, there are protocols set in place that this is how, this is how you ask to be on, on the off-duty employment list. This is the list that will go down, and, and it won't matter whether you live in town or whether you live out of town. If you volunteer for it, then you're expected to show up at that time.
Perfect. Any other questions?
It's one other. Chief, in addition to these volunteer hours, would this affect their furlough days at all?
Mayor and Councilmember Brown, no, this does not affect Fair Labor Standards Act. This is their off-duty employment. We're only in control of their normal 40 hours of their normal 80-hour work hours. Now, there are some things that we do put in place where we say, there must be at least an eight-hour timeframe from when you worked your off-duty job to when you start your next shift, so that they don't do, so they, they aren't at work for 20 hours straight without a break. So, we write that in our protocols to make sure that, that does not happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? With that, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapadus?
Yes.
Councilmember Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Item 10.6, the Mayor and City Council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Chapter 17 Development Fees of the Maricopa City Code relating to the administration, calculation, and collection of development fees on new development within the city of Maricopa and amending the Maricopa City Code by amending Chapter 17 of the previously adopted City Code. This is for discussion and action, and the item is related to the ordinance following 14-06. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, the resolution and the ordinance in front of you is to kind of close the loop on the, the development impact fee study that was conducted starting last year, and through the report of Tischler Vice, and with the council approving the, the report in mid, I think, early May, this, the ordinance and the resolution will make the report and the, the city code identical. So, the, the fees that were adopted will now be updated in Chapter 17 of the, for the code.
Perfect. So, it's simply a code update, and my favorite part about this is that the home builders and, you know, many of the developers were consulted on this. They agree with it. They're, you know, they understand it. They're, they're, they like the fact that we're moving forward with it. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions on this? Can I have a motion, please?[1737.12]